That's just my existing agreement. But you guys had independent counsel review this. I will bring that up just to make sure there's not.
Thank you. Sherry, Sherry, you got a second?
Sherry, you have a second to talk to the board.
You sent me an email about defensive driving. Can I do that on the internet?
Yes, and you should have gotten an email following that saying that here's the link to complete it. Did you get that?
Probably.
Okay. Well, if you don't find it, let me know and I'll resend it to you.
Did I come down to your office and set me up at a computer to do that?
Yeah, we can do that. That'd be great.
You've got time of the day to set me up? I'll come by after the meeting.
Okay, sounds good.
Were you pulling it out of your pit? Your hill?
Well, I've got a job. I'm going to go on another deal, so.
Yeah.
Have you moved into your house yet?
Moved in last Saturday.
Good morning, everyone. Let's call to order our Board of County Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, November 24th.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Present.
Mr. Harris?
Present.
Chair Weimeyer?
Present.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the state of Kansas.
All right, very ovation today. Fill your face. Morning.
Will you pray with me this morning? Our Father, we come to you and we say, God, we are so thankful for those that have chosen to commit themselves to service, to serve in this capacity, to lead our county and make the decisions that have to be made. And Father, we pray your continued guidance and wisdom be upon them, and not just them, but God, our administrator and all department heads, God, as they go through their business each day, God, they make decisions that are impactful to the citizens of this county in many, many ways. And God, we just say continue to give them that guidance and wisdom in everything that they do. And Father, I just say thank you for those that are serving in this capacity in our county, all of the employees, all of the leaders, and the commissioning as well. Thank you. Thank you for your service. And we thank you, Lord God, for all that you have done for us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Are we a public comment today?
We do.
All right.
Paul Bean.
Good morning. Paul Bean, 35 Westwood Circle, Ottawa, Kansas. And I'm just here today as an individual of Franklin County. I don't have my work hat on. I know on the agenda, you've got a discussion about extending the contract for the county administrator, and I just wanted to voice my profound support of that. I have the unique opportunity of being in the building, thanks to your generosity, allowing me to have an office here. As a result of that, I get to see how the county's managed and how Derek Leach, his group, have also been able to sit through a department head meeting and various other events. And just continually impressed with his professionalism, with his talents, with his expertise and knowledge. And I just feel like he's a real, we're really lucky to have him as a county administrator in Franklin County. I think very highly of his ability. He's very thoughtful. He doesn't make quick judgments without a lot of thought, but he also can move on things. But just also a person of high character, which I think is important to all of us. And he truly, truly, truly cares about the employees of the county and the citizens of them. I just wanted to, as a citizen of the county, express my deep appreciation for his leadership. You certainly will extend his contract. So thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Consent agenda today includes meeting minutes from November 17th and longevity pay employees amount of $71,919.30. A motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weimeyer?
Yes. And our first item of business is to consider for approval the addendum to employment agreement extending the term of employment for the county administrator slash counselor.
Yeah, so before I took this job and three of you who hired me are still sitting on the board, that being you, Colt, Don, and Roy, one of the things that I discussed with you was the job security is of the utmost importance to me. And at that time, I told you that when we were discussing contracts, that I would probably always ask for a renewal once I got into that last year of my current contract. And that's where we're at. October 1st of this year basically marked the start of my last year. We've discussed this and I believe mutually agree on extending the contract. What you have in front of you is an addendum. So my current employment agreement that you had reviewed by independent counsel will still remain in effect with just a couple of exceptions. This addendum extends the timeframe of this agreement for four years from the end of the agreement. So my, this, my current agreement lapses September 30th of 2022. This addendum will extend the term from October 1st of '22 for four more years. So it's, you know, you will have me under contract for basically five more years. The only substantive change other than that involves my severance. My current agreement provides for six months of severance pay. I have asked that that be changed to 12 months of severance pay. To be very clear, I don't think, I would hope that this never comes into play. If I choose to resign from this position, you wouldn't pay me a dime. If I do something intentional that subjects the county to damages, you wouldn't pay a dime of this. What this protects me from is if I get three new commissioners who just decide for political reasons that they either don't want an administrator or they want someone that holds different views on different things and just decide they want to let me go. In that case, my severance would be paid out. And so I just, we all know that these are very politically divisive times. And that's just one of the conditions that is important to me moving forward. So any of you have any questions about this addendum?
To be clear, this would normally automatically renew. If we don't get around to it or something like that, you're not fired at the end of the deal. But you prefer, and we do too, to affirmatively say at the end of each contract, yes, we'd like you to stick around and adjust it anything is needed, but that's what we're doing today. Questions, comments on this one? We've had the contract for quite some time, been able to review it, and any changes?
I just have one comment. Colt? You know, I've been, of course, like Derek said, I've been here from the start of his employment and really appreciate what he's done for our county. And when you look at the other counties that don't have administrators, they're struggling. They have a hard time doing the business of their counties without administrators. So we're very fortunate to have an administrator like Derek. And what this contract does is extends it another four years. I think his performance has been exemplary, like Paul Bean said. And I think we are fortunate to have Derek on staff and taking care of the everyday works of this county.
I agree. The only thing I might say is that being here as long as I've been here, that you have to have somebody in this position. They got to be more than knowledgeable. They got to be able to take the lumps and all that. Because I've seen a lot of people come through, I thought were very professional and very good people, but if they can't take the heat sometimes, it doesn't do us any good. So you have to have somebody that can, that can take the heat and can bear under unusual circumstances like we've had through the pandemic to be the buck stops with us also. But you got to have somebody that can navigate us through that situation. So that's all I have to say.
And I would agree. The county's in a really good place and a lot of that is due to Derek, not only financially, but the leaders, the leadership of our departments. The county really is in a good place. And, yeah, and I've told him a lot of times, without an administrator, if we were dealing with personnel and COVID and all the things that go with that, we would be in a world of hurt because I know a lot of counties are. So, yeah, I do appreciate having an administrator, and I think he does a really good job.
Well put. All right. Let's try your luck. An affirmative motion would be to approve the addendum to employment agreement extending the term of employment for the county administrator, counselor.
So moved.
There's a second?
Thank you.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yeah.
Chair Weimeyer?
Yes.
Colt, before we move on, I do just want to say that I appreciate it, appreciate the five of you. I, there is no part of me, not a single part, that feels entitled to having this position. Like, I recognize that this is a great privilege. It's a privilege to serve the five of you. It's a privilege to serve this community, and it's a privilege to work with a great group of people that we've built here. You know, one of my favorite parts of this job is I've now gotten to work for nine different commissioners. The five of you, Commissioner Oglesby, Steve Harris, Randy Renaud, and I'm missing one. Who's the?
Rick?
Rick Howard, yeah. And all nine of you have been fantastic to work for. And I do think that financially, we're in a good spot. I think our facilities are in a good spot. But I think the thing that as I look at where we're at, that I am most proud of, it is the team that we've built. I think we've got an extraordinary group of employees. And I think we continue to build that team despite a very, very difficult labor market. And so I think that is what rises up above everything else, is the quality of person that we have working here. So, but I appreciate the five of you and your confidence in me, so thank you.
Thanks. Our second item of business is to consider a proposal from SCS engineers to perform groundwater monitoring activities out of the landfill. I believe Pat will speak to this item. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. What we've got here, this is every five-year process we have to go through. I'm out there at the transfer station. There's monitoring wells and they have to test groundwater, make sure they're free of the lead, the arsenic, you know, all the heavy metals plus atrazine, and they do chemical tests too. Like I said, 2021, we got, somehow we got off a year. It was supposed to be on the fives, but it's not. We got off a year several years back. So we're still on that five-year rotation. Tend to believe, we're waiting on the scheduling, but could be December, might be January next year. KDHE is just fine with that. But like I say, it's just a proposal to have SCS come down and sample the water and get it sent away to KDHE.
These wells basically encircle the facility and let us know if anything's migrated out.
Exactly. And there's a couple wells actually up on the facility where it's still the actual household, old household trash is buried and to make sure nothing's leaching out.
And the next one we do, no matter when we get it done, the next one we done in 2025.
Yes, yes. And that should be on, because that's a post-closure, it's 30-year post-closure schedule. And the next one we do after this one should be our 30 or 31st year. So we should be done with that part pending results, of course.
All right. Was there a motion to approve this proposal from SCS engineers? The amount's $10,450.
I'm moved.
There's a second?
Thank you.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Weimeyer?
Yes. That, of course, will be paid for out of fees from dumping, not tax dollars. So thank you.
Thank you, both.
Third item is to discuss replacing flooring here in this building, the annex. Good morning, Brandon.
Good morning. So we had our bid opening last week for the flooring project here in this building. The pre-bid, we had seven companies attend that. And we only had one, one company actually submit their bid properly, I should say. We did have one other company email their bid in, which they really needed to deliver it in person or mail it in. But regardless, we just really didn't get the turnout that we thought we were going to get. On that, I do have a copy of the company that did turn in their bid. I'll show that to you. The reason I didn't put it with everything else is if, you know, depending on the direction we go, we decide not to award this bid. If we want to rebid this, we may write to have their number out there stated. So I'll pass this up to you real quick just so you can see it.
Is this proposal considerably higher than we were expecting?
Well, it is. It is a little bit higher than we were expecting. When we were talking about flooring options at the beginning of 2020, that was obviously, it was just pre-COVID. That was really before things really started getting crazy.
Yep.
So, I mean, besides the fact that it's been over a year ago now, you know, there's going to be some changes there, supply issues, you know. So we would anticipate the number to come up some. We also were looking at carpeting at that point. And now we've since changed to a hard floor, an LVT option. So that kind of comes into play as well. Something else to keep in mind is regardless of what flooring we go with, we need to do moisture testing on the concrete below the finished floor. If we don't, we run into issues. We have glue that is seeping up through the seams, and it's just not a good deal. So this bid includes the moisture testing. And then there is a cost associated with remediation of the moisture. However, they plan to do that using the glue as a layer, fortunately, is typically the option that they begin with. So not knowing what the results of the moisture testing is, they just put a, um, a spread fee.
Did everybody include that in their proposal?
The moisture testing and remediation?
Yeah. Was it part of the requirements to bid?
Yes.
Okay.
Brandon, you had seven people come out and take measurements for this, and we got two bids, only one that conforms. Why is that?
Yeah, so I reached out to a couple of companies that were at the pre-bid. One of the issues that we ran into was we specked out flooring for two different manufacturers here. Part of the reason for that was, you know, the flooring that you all looked at and picked out, we kind of selected for the main hallways and everything, the restrooms. We just went with what was put in the suite two remodel for the restroom floors in there, which was really good. So we just put that there. That was a different manufacturer than the one that we, that you all looked at for the hallways. It turns out that not everybody can get all of that. They only sell to certain contractors. At least one that I talked to, they were unable to get that from me, so I didn't put a bid because they couldn't. I was unaware of that until.
If we did comparable, comparable flooring to that, I mean?
Yeah, we could find something. Yeah, we could figure something out to get them all into the same, same bed.
And I think our recommendation to the board is going to be that we hold off on accepting this bid because the company that we talked to is local. They bid a lot of our stuff, and I think they would give us a good bid. We just have to have some kind of flooring that they are able to get. And so my thought would be you let us come up with some comparable flooring options. And then we just reach out to all seven of the folks that were here, rather than restart the whole process, and just say, okay, we want you to bid this flooring. That way, we'll hopefully end up with more than one. I mean, the company you talked to literally told you they would bid it if it were flooring that. So I think it'd be worth our time to reach back out. We could potentially get a significantly better price than what is in front of you. So I think it's probably worth the staff time and effort to do that.
I agree.
We are only doing the, the public corridors, right? Because there was something in here about moving medical equipment, safe and refrigerator, but there's no medical equipment in the area that we're doing, is there?
That's right. Well, we, so with that moisture testing issue that I was talking about earlier and seeping up through the floor, the immunization room and the health department is actually having that problem right now. And so while we were bidding this, we just thought, hey, let's see what it looks like.
Okay.
To include that. So that's where that's coming from.
So if the five of you have no objections, I'll just have Brandon find some. And I do, I think we want to make sure it's, we give them a comparable.
I do think we need to specify a material. Flooring can be any, sky's the limit to, you can really get some junk. So, yeah, just to have apples to apples comparison, maybe call something out that's readily available.
So I would say find something of comparable quality that is readily available and then reach out to all seven of them with that. And if they can't get it, just ask that they call you and tell you that, like, well, we still can't get this kind. And if they can't, ask them, what kind can you get so that we can get some more bids?
Yeah, absolutely. I will point out just one other thing on this bid in front of you. There would, there would be a savings if we went with a different option, same company, still Mohawk Flooring. But they have a line that is just below the one that we had selected. I've actually got samples. I just got them today. I'll put them in the suite two, in the administration suite, so you can take a look at them if you'd like. Really, the only, after talking with the manufacturer, the only real difference is the, how deep the embossing is on the surface of the flooring. So it looks a little bit more realistic on the option that you guys looked at initially. But I can hardly tell a difference. So I'll set them both in suite two if you'd like to take a look at them. But there would be a pretty significant savings if we were to switch to that.
So would you ask them to bid the one option and bid the second option so we can look at the difference?
We could do that. We could do that. If you're happier with the, I mean, if you all are happy with that, the cheaper option, then I would say we would just bid that one, knowing that it's cheaper anyway.
What's the difference? What kind of difference are you looking at?
It's, well, it were right around $8,000 savings for the total project.
We just want to make sure, a lot of times, the commercial flooring has a less of a, more of a skid resistance and it's required in commercial settings, especially since they have a lot of medical use here. Make sure it doesn't polish or become slick in wet weather. It may be, may be required anyways for this, this use. But if that's not the case, then, well, I don't know why we wouldn't, so.
They have all exactly the same specifications as the other flooring. It's just how it looks visually, so. Only difference.
I have no problem letting Brandon use his judgment on that, just the same as I'm doing on the restroom areas, so. Any objection to table on this and moving forward with that? All right, then.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. The fourth item is to discuss the Franklin County Historical Society's proposed changes to our proposed lease for the Visitors Information Center building.
So as the five of you know, this is something we've been talking about off and on for months. We, so initially, after staff and board members from both organizations met, the Historical Society gave us a list of requests. I took that list and incorporated it into just the county's boilerplate lease and sent it to them. What you have in front of you is what, after reviewing it with their board and their legal counsel, they have some proposed changes to the lease. And that's in front of you. I will tell you that there's nothing in here that gives me huge heartburn, but I do think that, that there are some things you guys need to consider. If you've got it in front of you, that first change on page one in the blue just better defines what the premises is. I don't have any issue with that at all. And to be clear, I'm not going to ask you guys to vote on this today. I just, we need to give Diana some direction because if she's going to take this or whatever we propose back to her board in December for potential approval, and then once they approve, it can come back to us for approval. But, so that change on page one, I don't have any issue with at all. We turn over to page two. That's just further clarification on how the tenant can exercise its right to renew. Certainly don't have any issue with that either. Page three has a couple of changes, just stating the tenant is satisfied with the condition of the property. That's certainly fine. This next one, I think discussion is warranted. So we're at the bottom of page three. They have requested that we install some kind of flooring on the second floor of the visitors center. So we've already kind of, we haven't agreed to anything until the lease is finalized. But, but when we met as staff and with a couple commissioners, we've talked about installing HVAC. So we've had that discussion, and now the request is for flooring. And I will tell you that, that this doesn't give me heartburn, but it's not my decision to make. I think the five of you have to decide if you want to install flooring as part of this deal. I can certainly have Brandon get a quote on what that costs, but I think some discussion is probably warranted today, so.
And then there's one about notice and being accompanied to enter the building at all?
That, that would be the, the only other one of these changes that I think warrants discussion is they are, and we need to provide them with notice. I mean, that, that's law before we enter into their space. They are asking that we agree that, I mean, the language they use, which I think is reasonable, is that they have the reasonable opportunity to be there with us when we enter. And I, I think the situations that were, may warrant discussion is if we have some kind of maintenance emergency in there and Brandon needs to get in. Like, I don't, you know, I don't know that we ought to agree that we have to wait until someone from the Historical Society is there. Because I think safeguarding their, their artifacts is the, and correct me if I'm wrong, Diana, but is kind of the, the premise behind adding this clause. But if it's, if we've got a flood or something and we have to wait until somebody from the Historical Society But if it's, if we've got a flood or something and we have to wait until somebody from the Historical Society potentially shows up, their artifacts may get damaged anyway. So I, that is the other piece of this that I think the board should discuss. But those are really the only two changes that that. And so do you wanna start with the flooring and and?
So prior to this, we had a proposal, send it to the Historical Society and then heard back a number of things they were asking to be added. And those were items that were beyond the lease. They're really uh kinda, a lot of those were more or less donations. Um, adding an HVAC uh unit to help preserve artifacts uh for the upstairs in that storage area. I believe we'll be providing in kind of maintenance to the facility inside and out. The use for of the facility for a nominal fee. Few others, but uh essentially a, you know, a very generous offer to begin with. And then uh, I believe we said yes to every one of the uh proposed changes the first time around. I don't think we disagreed with any of them from mine.
Yeah, so so if I can hop in, Cole, their original request, they wanted a formal lease of five years with three subsequent five-year options. We gave that to them. They asked for nominal rent of a hundred dollars or less per month. Um, we set it at twelve hundred per year or a hundred per month. Installation of HVAC on the second floor, which I I've, I don't think it's been voted on, but I've, I sense the board is generally okay with that. Um, installation of new locks to separate their area. We've indicated that's not a problem. County will continue to be responsible for water, gas, electric, sewer, structural maintenance, grounds, cleaning and upkeep of the common areas, restrooms. We've agreed to all of that. Um, they've asked for the right to make cosmetic changes to their space. We've agreed to that. Um, and they've asked for new exterior signage that jointly promotes the visitors center and the Historical Society. That is in here as well. So, yeah, we did include, um, we amended our lease to accommodate all of these requests. That, and and those were the first round of requests. And then of this second round, again, the the two to discuss probably are the the flooring and then just what we wanna do in terms of maintenance's right to enter that building.
I've been with this idea from the very beginning, kind of started with the conversation between some of the uh board members or people who have a good concern with the Historical Society and wanna see it have a good future. And then with on the the group that met with the Historical Society group, and really seen this from the beginning. That being said, it's my, I guess, opinion and and view that uh Historical Society is in a facility that's fallen down around them. The county stepped up, made a very generous offer. Um, they came back, asked for a few changes. We're happy to oblige those. And uh, at my point, I I have no problem with some of the verbiage changes, further defining things. I think it's great to discuss those and get those things ironed out to begin with. But uh, I guess it's my opinion or view that we made a very generous offer. Um, I I don't really have much appetite to continue adding it. I'd say at this point is kind of take it or leave it.
I think it was my understanding that the upstairs was gonna be used basically for storage and putting the AC in to preserve the artifacts. I'm not sure what putting floor in would 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 make a difference in preserving that artifacts is just. I I think I would agree that if they want flooring, then it would be, you know, I don't see any reason to put it in at our expense.
Is it uh this for storage up there?
I would defer. Come on up, Diana. Yeah.
Thank you. Um, our main reason to request some sort of hard flooring on that second floor is that currently it's just plywood, which is really hard to keep dust free, um, which is a necessity for, we'll be storing our textiles up there. So we're just asking for any hard floor. It does not have to be a high-end floor, just something that we can reasonably be able to keep clean. So that was the only reason why we requested that.
You guys be able to paint the floor so it's sweepable?
Well, that's a good question. I don't know enough about um how well sealing plywood with paint would work. Um, if it would be mappable, I I I would have to look into that. I've never done that before for a floor.
Yeah, and this is just one of those decisions that that the five of you need to make. I mean, we're capable. Brandon, I'm sure is capable of getting a quote on, I I don't know enough about flooring, what is cheaper versus what? If tile is cheaper or if just some kind of laminate, we can do that. Or, you know, i- if it's the board's opinion that that you've made a generous offer. And certainly they, the Historical Society is one of our community partners. We do give them money here as well. Um, that is certainly a decision that is within your purview as well. So I just need feedback on how you'd like me to proceed.
Well, thanks for letting us know what what that would be for. We'll discuss this item a little further and then we may move down the list and.
Do you want me to address the the other issue now or do you want me to?
Yeah, no, that's fine. You can.
Um, the board, their concern was not so much about emergency maintenance on building entry, but there was something in that, in there, some language about if if you wanted to sell the property, that you could bring people through. Um, and I think there was just something about the language that suggested that we didn't need to be there. And we were, there was just general concern among the board of bringing in random people to wander around the building without us being aware. But we totally would prefer that if the building is flooding, you can go ahead and shut off the water. That would be our preference.
Well, I'd uh my thought, uh we're given in kind, the the maintenance, those people, we don't have a large maintenance staff. And they're asked to do a lot of things in a lot of different places. If they're gonna, you know, do those services, which we're fine with, obviously, we agreed to before, but then also have to do it at a certain time, at a certain date, they may have an emergency at the jail, an emergency at an HVAC unit at a different facility. We just don't have a deep bench there. If there's any way we could maybe back maintenance out, cause they're gonna have plenty of reasonable reasons, emergency or not to be there.
No, I think that's reasonable.
I think easily carve out maintenance. So I'll just request some modified language. Because practically speaking, I don't know why any other county staff would even be in there.
If you don't want, somebody doesn't really have a good reason to be milling around when you're not there, that's reasonable. But yeah.
We've uh, in the last few years, having a building that we have shared with other people, um, when we installed security cameras, we realized that people were walking in and they're curious about what we have. And so they poke around and they're not necessarily up to no good, but they shouldn't be poking around either. So.
That is the the point of the things you have in your collection to make people curious, right?
That's right.
It's working. Alright, well, let's discuss the uh, thanks. Any thoughts on that in the flooring?
Roy, Don, what are your thoughts? Rod?
Uh, Doug, I think it's normal for a landlord to have keys to everything. Isn't that a normal practice?
Yeah, yeah, and I.
I I could uh I prefer looking into the flooring situation, whether we do something very cheaply or or need to do a little bit more. If it's just for storage, uh I wouldn't think we'd wanna do a whole lot, I would guess. Cause uh, I know over there at the uh the big barn over there, dress view, you know, there's, it's just concrete flooring over there. So I don't know what kind of artifacts would need. I I understand the the cleanliness thing. It might be a lot easier if you had a flooring to to keep it clean. I see that. But uh, I don't, I think we need to look into it, maybe.
Your thought is for us to get pricing? Okay, okay.
Something adequate.
Okay.
I was doing some quick research while we were talking about flooring and it sounds like maybe you need to sand plywood before you paint it. Although it is definitely doable. I don't know how much more work, you know, if you, if you have to sand it and then clean it and then um, use an exterior like porch paint, which probably would give you the but by the time you take the time to sand it, I don't know. But it it probably wouldn't be bad just to at least get a quote, just to see what we're looking at if we're I don't know.
Okay, okay.
I'm wondering about getting a price on linoleum. I mean, I don't know what the cost of that is. Then we can talk about it again.
Yeah, I I kinda go along with the law. Of course, they put underlayment underneath and it wouldn't be, had to be hardly any sanding on the plywood or anything. But I don't think, the only thing we want from the very beginning here, we've been uh uh agreeable to let them move out there. But we don't wanna rob the whole bank just to get them in there. I mean, we still have funds there that need to be dedicated to county tourism. I mean, you know, and and I don't mind fixing it up and getting it right and all that, as long as we're, we don't lose the thought that those funds is to promote. And I realize that's part of county tourism. But there's a whole bunch more out there besides that. So, and it's gonna have to keep coming in out there to keep that going. You know, so yeah, that's my only thought. But like, I'm, I just need to look at linoleum. It don't have to be high-priced linoleum. It can just be linoleum, you know. They got all ranges, so.
Sounds like Brandon's gonna be a popular guy at the flooring contractors.
Yeah. So Brandon, why don't you look into the cost of a linoleum flooring? Um, and we'll, I will propose some uh different language in the lease and we'll get that over to Diana. And and once Brandon's had the opportunity, we'll we'll be back in front of you and and we can have further discussion then.
Alright.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Gets us down to staff reports.
Next week. So obviously, the county has closed um tomorrow and Friday. Next Wednesday, um uh several of us, Janet, myself, Brenda, Paul, Casey, are gonna be down at a leadership training that we got through the Pathways Grand and the Health Department. And so we won't be here next Wednesday. Um, I will tell you, we've built a deep bench here. Um, I've already talked to Sari. Sari could be here and could absolutely help emcee a meeting if if the five of you wanna have one. But David Lee, I believe, will still be out next week on vacation. There's just not gonna be a a ton of the usual suspects here. So would you like to plan on? Certainly can can have Amy solicit agenda items like she always does and play it by ear. Or we can make the decision now to go ahead and and cancel that meeting.
We got time for studying on Monday?
Well, and that's a great question. As I sit here, I do not, but if you don't wanna cancel both meetings for next week, I can probably conjure something up to study. I just don't know what it is as I, you know. Again, I, you know, so much of what we study is normally public works related and and David has taken a much-needed vacation. So I don't, like, I would be affirmatively looking for, I think, to have on a study session as well.
It's alright that sometimes things are just working well. You don't need a meeting. So.
Like, December is historically our slowest month and and so it's not, not surprising.
Absent anything that's kind of urgent that pops up, maybe is everybody alright with just uh holding off on a meeting next week? Both meetings?
Yeah.
Um we'll let um Brenda and or Casey discuss this in more detail. Just wanna say a few words. We had a a clinic this past Saturday. I was not able to be in attendance at it, but I have heard um nothing but great things. Seven hundred shots, booster shots we gave out. Um, and by all accounts, I've had multiple people tell me we were set up to do even more. It's the largest clinic we've ever had. And and, you know, I I want Brenda or Casey to talk about the clinic, kind of the the swag bags, as you called it. But we've, we've just got great feedback on that. So so Brenda, why don't you? Yeah.
Thank you. And as Derek said, it went extremely well, just like they have done many times in the last several, you know, months. Um, we, as Derek said, we had seven hundred on the books, uh six hundred and seventy, to be exact, that did come. The great news about Ottawa in our local community is that there is a lot of pharmacies also offering the booster. So we um had some, take, you know, go ahead and take advantage of that. And then, of course, there was those that got sick or simply forgot. But they did call us back. And so we will be holding um more booster clinics and I'll, I'll explain it in a minute. But like Derek said, it went extremely well. I was able to work in a pod myself. And it was uh great to hear, you know, you think this is going phenomenal. Uh, you hear horror stories about how people wait three, four hours. I had received an email from a very kind gentleman. That said, you know, it was amazing. I was greeted at the front by Christian, who's one of our COVID team members. Um, and he's always bragged about, he does a great job, as does everyone. But he went on to say that his appointment to get the vaccine was at twelve fifteen. And with being greeted with Christian with the wheelchair, um, both of them received their vaccine at twelve sixteen. So, um, so within just, you know, one minute. So that was quite delightful. So of course, we appreciate his comments. So um, the other great news is we've also, um, like Derek said, we gave out a goodie bag. And thanks to Casey, um, we got an opportunity to give everybody post-it notes, a great pen, a great letter opener, um, hand sanitizer. Can you imagine that? Um, with our logos, with EMS logos, um, of course, the Health Department logo and recognizing emergency management as well, cause we need all of the team members to make that happen. So, um, also, we also have added a Peds clinic. I didn't know if you heard that or not, but we did offer it a couple times. And we um served seventy children. Okay? And we will also be opening up every Wednesday and Friday to continue to offer booster clinics, which means that we can serve sixty people. That online and help people out there. Any questions or did I miss any?
Just, just to elaborate, a Peds clinic is is what?
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
That's okay. Just for the public who may.
Yeah, we actually had it right here. Um, last night was another one. We had so many calls that we went ahead and extended the time. And so that is age groups from five to eleven-year-old to receive the Pfizer vaccine. Thank you.
That sounds like a lot of very positive interactions with the county and the public.
Yes, yes, it has.
And this booster clinic, this was all set up before they opened it to everybody. So all these people were sixty-five and older or immune compromised or?
Or in the right profession, right? Or in the occupation. That's right. And you're correct. Um, they have opened it up and so that's why we're opening up more days to help. Yep.
So what do you think? And and I'm sorry, you're you're on the spot and and Casey, you can chime in. But from the moment a a a citizen was greeted to when they walked out the door after their observation period, what do you think that average time length is?
I think Tom was, was, did he say twenty-seven minutes?
I think twenty-seven minutes.
There's a required waiting period after.
How long?
Fifteen minutes. You do have to wait for fifteen minutes. Yes.
So with a fifteen-minute required waiting period, we get, you know, not including that, you get people in and out in twelve minutes. Average. Um, and that's a testament just to the refinement that that has went into these clinics. And you just can't say enough about it, frankly.
Well, it took me longer to fill out the questionnaire than. It took me fifteen minutes to fill out the questionnaire.
You're not the only one. So we helped a few too when they were asked. So.
Is there anything else you wanna give an update on?
Just a real quick update, and it's only just beginning. KDHE has asked the Kansas Association of Local Health Departments to participate in planning what they call steady state. Steady state is defined as basically moving COVID from pandemic to endemic. Now, this committee hasn't even met yet. They're hoping to meet in December. But what that may mean for the Health Department is that basically we treat COVID like we treat it, like flu. Okay? And that we will be moving away from possibly testing COVID test. In fact, the Kansas um local association has done a survey recently with all of the health departments across Kansas. And sixty percent participated. And what they found is that fifty percent of those um health departments actually departments actually conduct COVID testing, but they do not actually charge the patient. 10% does also do conduct the COVID testing, but they do charge the patient, okay? And then there's 40% of health departments that do not test at all. We, of course, are in that first category where we test, but we do not bill for the service. So again, the committee has not even met, but they are starting to look at endemic. So you may hear more, because I learned more. Of course, Derek and Casey will know and hear more things, and I'll keep them updated. But if you have questions along the way, please let me know. Questions?
I would be interested, you know, I know that a lot of counties, when it got really bad, just went, we can't contact trace anymore. But as far as I know, we had, we never stopped contact tracing. And I wonder, are counties, do you have any idea are counties still doing contact tracing? When they, when they quit, did they ever go back?
They're supposed to be doing it, or I guess we never even, like you said, ever even hesitated, because that's just life. I can honestly say, apologize, I don't know if they ever did go. I haven't had the opportunity to learn that. But you're exactly right. We chose to keep that in-house as much as possible. State is doing more and more, but we like that, again, better satisfaction, better customer service. Erin Laurie does a phenomenal job with the schools. Just, it also makes her, you know, it's better service. So we've kept it in-house. Thanks again to Derek and all of you that allow us to have enough staff to make that happen. So deeply appreciate having enough staff to make that happen.
So if we move away from the pandemic, will we move away from contact tracing, or will that still be a part?
That's the plan. And now, let me, I don't want to misspeak, I want to be clear, their planning. They have not met yet, but steady state. Treat it like you do the flu. But they haven't met yet.
And as the five of you know, we've still, we still have excess CARES Act funds, let alone ARPA funds, which is the second COVID-related stimulus wherein we have received $5.1 million. We're talking about the first stimulus, the CARES Act. We still have funds from that. I don't anticipate recommending that we do anything with our COVID staff anytime soon, because they're still being paid with stimulus funds. And you'll recall back before the Delta surge, you know, it got slow for a little bit, and we all thought, well, do we want to keep these folks on? And thank goodness that we did, because, you know, the strain from the Delta surge was huge. And so I don't, I want to make sure we don't get hasty and make an impulsive decision anytime soon, just in terms of, I want to make sure that you have the staff that you need, especially when that is the number-one use of that stimulus money. And we're still, you know, we're still nowhere close to being through CARES Act funds, let alone subsequent stimulus packages, so.
And we're able to utilize those people for other tasks in the Public Health Department, the clinic, and the other good things the department does?
Absolutely. There's always something to do, no doubt.
Why don't you talk about some of your, like, forward initiatives, some of the things that you would like to, some of the things we could use those staff members?
Absolutely. I know, most of you know me, or getting to know me. I have been a dietitian and a certified diabetes educator for many, many years, and lived in the community for over 24 years. And I still receive calls for folks that need help with hyperlipidemia, of course, their blood sugars, diabetes. I also believe that just, you know, more education and helping people take care of themselves in so many ways. We have hired a new health educator, Chelsea Meacham. She was born here, raised here, went to school here. Everyone loves her. And so she's just started here recently, but she's very excited. We're currently doing a survey, a community health survey, which is a requirement, because we are tax-exempt as the can Elizabeth Layton Center and the hospital. There's a team of us, and thanks to Casey, it is social media. And I'd love to have you take that survey, by the way. I always like to put a plug in there, because the more data I have, the more that I will know how to serve our community better. So currently, we're doing a survey, along with many organizations again in Franklin County, to see what we can serve and how we can do better. So just looking forward to how we can do that, kind of thing, so.
Brenda, are you doing any flu vaccination?
Oh, yes. We have a busy clinic right now. Today we're booked. Today a little early because of the holiday, because of the holiday times. But yeah, we have several on the books today for flu, for all ages.
So people need to call in if they want a flu shot?
Yes, yes, you bet. And I am, all of our new materials talk about call for an appointment, because we want to be just as efficient as the COVID clinics, because, you know, I've seen it happen enough here, everywhere I've worked, that someone just walks in, they beat the person with appointment by a minute, and the person with the appointment now waits 20 minutes. So yes, please call for appointment. We'd love to take care of everyone. Yes, great.
Is that a fee for a flu shot?
It depends on your insurance. So Medicare will pay for it, and then there's Medicare that deals with the insurances. So, so we always, Tammy is amazing. Again, she's been with the county a long time, but she's able to assess that before they come. So, great questions, wonderful questions. Other questions for me? Suggestions?
Appreciate your time. Good to hear from you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything we know about FCDC?
Had a nice visit yesterday. At Commerce, they have a division where they're recruiting industry for the state of Kansas. So they have recruiters all across the country. One's in Washington, one's in Chicago, one's in Dallas, one's out in California. And the head of that department visited Ottawa yesterday. And so I got to spend a couple hours with her and show her Proximity Park and the North Industrial, and talk about the opportunities in Wellsville and throughout the county. So it was nice to have the head of that department here, seeing for herself what we have to offer. Great support from her. And so it's nice to continue to get great support from the Department of Commerce. They've just been phenomenal. We did get a couple more leads for Proximity Park, submitted a request for proposal yesterday on one of them. The other one required an existing building, so we passed on that for now. But in the conversations I had with our visitor yesterday, they're really starting to push back on some of those that request an existing building, because there just aren't any. And so they're trying to entice them to broaden their search a little bit and look at. So we are at 39 that have come across my desk so far this year. And I think right now we have five of them that are active. I was told yesterday of one that was active that went dormant. But it was nice to have that attention from Commerce, and they're certainly there to help us. So it was a good day for us.
Thank you, Paul. Can I say anything for Plante Zoney? Nope. All right, Casey? All right. Anything for resources by chance, Sari? All right. Thought I'd ask Brandon, anything you didn't cover today? Sheriff.
Good morning. I wanted to touch on Mr. Dixon. You had asked about contact tracing. And I would tell you that for, in our office, especially with our jail staff, we still do internally have done that. We work with the Health Department whenever we find, they let us know when there's somebody that has been positive that we've, that we've interacted with. They still come in and do testing. And then we still, even with all of our shuffle, we're still have our testing protocol in place for all of our staff, which is what we work with Health Department, so they kind of train some of us to do, to do that. So we are still keeping, keeping up on that internally, anyway. So I can't speak to the rest of it, but I can tell you what we're, what we're doing to kind of answer that. When I came into office several years ago, we had a record management system that had not been updated. It had been purchased, and, but the updates were not always being rolled out, and it wasn't working properly. So shortly after that time, we went to a new system. We partner with us, the City of Wellsville, City of Ottawa, so that we have a shared records management system for law enforcement. I bring that up because I just wanted to send, give kudos to Dustin. He, he makes sure that we remain up to date on those. He seems to know if a, sometimes when you roll out a new version of things, I mean, it kind of breaks something different. And he's been able to stay up to date on that. And I know that this, this week, we had one of those types of situations where he told us, hey, we're gonna do this, but don't do this part yet until we get the fix. And it, our system works well the way that it, it's intended, because he has stayed up, made sure that we're staying up to date on those things. So I just wanted to give kudos to our IT department for that. I'm not a technology guy, he can tell you that. If it works exactly like it's supposed to, when it's supposed to, then I can, I can use it. But if there's a hiccup, I'm not your guy. And so, so I just appreciate what they're, what Dustin and his crew have done for us with our RMS system and all of that. So I would be happy to answer any questions that you guys may have for me.
Thanks, Sheriff. Thanks for your time. Any clear questions?
Derek and I are gonna be meeting after this meeting to discuss budget and any amendments that we need. And we are going to need an amendment. Also, we'll need to review our budget transfers for the end of the year, which are basically all contingent on the current state of our budget too. So we'll review all of those too. But we're probably looking at the last two weeks of December to, one of those two weeks, to do the budget amendment with the publication and everything. So please let me know if you have a conflict and you think that you might not be at those meetings or having something, so we can plan appropriately.
Commissioners, Mr. Stottlemyre?
Been kind of slow. I'll be going to the Wellsville meeting tonight. But I did attend last Thursday night in Ossawatomake with the ribbon cutting on the Solid Waste Authority, working with the city over there. I didn't bring, brought the brochure. It was several people, a pride group, Rotary Club, the city, Chamber, and the Solid Waste Authority Lake Region. And we placed, I believe it was 13 park benches and stools and benches, recyclable benches all over the city of Ossawatomake. And they had a ribbon cutting on that. And I always, when I go to the Chamber up at Wellsville, I keep telling them, or any other city that's interested, Shay, I'd be happy to make the contact between her and the Solid Waste Authority. They're just now issuing, they did, I think, almost a half a million dollars last year in recyclable projects. So the money's out there. If you've got a good project and want to pursue it, just let me know, and I'll give you Shay's contact. And either I or David, either one, or Pat, we're all, we all sit on that board. So we'd be more willing to pass the information on to any community that they're interested in trying to apply for that and do some. People think it's just totally recycling program. It's not. There's other recycling issues that you could pursue with those, with those grant funds. So, and that particularly goes right into the tire recycling part of it, you know, down the park benches and those tables and things like that. So that's all there.
The only thing I have, the city had their study session on Monday, which was a monthly report session. And last year was like a record year for sales tax in Franklin County. And as of 10 months in, we have already met last year's. So it's, it's really a record year for seriously shopping in Franklin County. And, and that really is great for honeywide budgets, though. Anyway, it's just amazing that, you know, we continue, those numbers continue to go up.
I don't know, really cool. All right, then. We'd need a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
All in favor of adjourn?
Thanksgiving, everyone.
Are you opposed?